I pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Just a couple of housekeeping things before we start. As you can tell, we have a few members missing tonight. One of them might be calling in. If he does, he cannot participate. He plans to call in just so he can keep up to date with what's going on, but he can't participate. But we do have a quorum for most of the items. And I'll explain that in a minute. I'm going to suggest that we change the agenda a little bit. Upon advice of our council, I'm going to recuse myself from the Carlin Industries and the Tuxedo Historical Society applications because I'm also on the board of the LDC. And both of those applicants have an application into the LDC for a grant. So to avoid any potential conflict, I won't be participating in those two applications. And I will literally leave the room during those discussions. So rather than having me come in and out, in and out, I want to move the Jason Bramlett application up to number four and move Carlin down one to number five. And that shouldn't delay things too much. That way, I only have to leave and come back once. Okay. So I'll call to order the regular meeting, and I'd like to have a motion or make a motion to approve the minutes if nobody has any questions on the minutes from our last meeting. Bill?
No question.
Any questions? Justin?
Nope.
Seconds are all approved?
Aye.
So the minutes from last week are approved. First item is Skyview Skylights. You're not able to do really anything on Skyview Skylights tonight because they still have a couple outstanding items from the ZBA. They appeared at the ZBA meeting at the end of February, and they probably will not be reappearing to the ZBA until the April meeting of the ZBA. They don't plan to appear in the March meeting for ZBA. So they won't be coming back to us until our May meeting, May 2nd, I think it is. But we can open and probably quickly close the public hearing on Skyview Skylights because we did advertise that.
Adjourned.
Adjourned, yeah.
Well, open and then adjourned.
Adjourned.
What did I say, close? Oh, close, okay. Thank you. So I'll make a motion to open it. Seconds are approved. I will ask if there's anybody on the Zoom, if they do have anything to say, we can still entertain their comments, right Kelly?
Yes.
Or anybody in the audience, we can entertain their comments. So let me start. Mary Gresser, if you can hear us, you'll have to unmute yourself if you have anything to say about the Skyview Skylight application.
Thank you for asking, but no, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Sue Scherer?
Thank you, but no, I do not.
Okay, thank you. Chris Kasker is a member of the board, and he's kind of in the same situation as I described Ned might be. He can only listen, so I won't acknowledge Chris for any questions. And then finally, Irene. You'll have to unmute yourself, Irene.
Hi, everyone. No, I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody in the audience have anything to say about Skyview Skylights? Ken?
Ken, this is a public hearing, right?
Yes.
Ken English, 42 Crossroads Road, Tuxedo. I've been following this for some time. I support the application. I think the business would be good for Tuxedo. And I haven't seen the most recent changes that have been proposed, but I know there were some major changes happening to the application, and I hope the board would consider them. I think Tuxedo could benefit from this business. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken. Now, they have significantly cut down the size of the building, which was one of the concerns of the ZBA. They still need two verities, as I understand it. And really, it's up to the ZBA. We, our hands are tied until the ZBA rules on it, which, as I said, won't be until the April ZBA meeting. So the earliest we can take our next step, if possible, would be the our May meeting, May 2nd. I see Maria May has just called in. Maria, do you have any comments on the Skyview Skylight application? You'll have to unmute yourself. How long do we wait?
With no comments?
So I'll take that as a no. So since somebody else has anything to say, I'll make a motion to adjourn the Skyview Skylight.
Sorry, no comment. I couldn't unmute myself.
Okay, Maria, thanks. So we'll adjourn the public hearing to no earlier than our May meeting. Have a second?
I'll second.
Favor? Okay. So we'll move up the Jason Bramlett application. So the first thing we will do is give a brief description of what you intend to do, and we'll get our consultants' comments, any board comments, and go from there.
Okay. Yeah, we'd like to have some internal offices for myself and my two sons with some storage of some of our parts if we move those parts from Houston to Texas, as well as if we want to work on our car, have our vehicle inside, but no storage outside, no vehicle storage outside. It's basically it.
Okay. Valerie, you want to start off with?
Yeah, so I, my only comments and Kelly worked them in as conditions of resolution, which were really just some changes to our amendments to the site plan in terms of just noting like limits of disturbance. Also, they have, again, it's a calculation that they need to just note what the units are for 4,241. And then we also noted that they should just make sure that they call out the different fences, garbage enclosures and the like. And then the other thing was lighting plan, that they need to show location heights, direction, power, and time of use for any outdoor lighting signs. We also, you know, questioned whether the new office would utilize a signage, so that would need to be added. So those are really just minor things that we are requesting as conditions of approval, and Kelly worked those into the resolution.
Okay. Thanks, Valerie. Sean?
Similarly, I spoke to Kelly before she prepared the resolution, so she incorporates some of my comments. The one thing I just want to point out and discuss with the board is, up until this point, you had reviewed a plan set consisting of two sheets. The most recent submission consists of four sheets. The additional two sheets consist almost entirely of standard details for the New York State Department of Transportation in connection with the work that the applicant's doing in the right of way. I don't really think it's appropriate for this board to approve that. It's not really part of the site plan approval. It's work that is going to be done in the right of way, and they're New York State DOT standard details. So I think that the, unless, unless anybody thinks differently, unless the applicant thinks differently, I don't see any need for this board to approve those. And part of the problem, I think, that could occur is if something needs to change in the field, it may need to come back to you for a site plan amendment if that's on there. Doesn't give the applicant the flexibility, I think, they want.
So you don't feel that should be a condition of the approval, a specific condition of the approval?
What would be a?
The DOT.
No, that's a general condition of all of your approvals. They have to get all outside agency approvals, so I think it would be redundant to include it as another specific condition.
Okay.
And so I didn't include those two plan sheets in the list of identification of materials. I left those two out because they're for the DOT.
Okay. The one thing that we discussed at the last meeting that I'd like to add as a specific condition, and I know you've addressed this, but I'd like to get it in the approval resolution, is that there be no overnight parking of any vehicles outside of the building.
That's correct.
And just for your knowledge, that will go with the site, right Kelly? You know, if you would sell it, that condition still stands on the site.
Unless they try and change, the next owner changes the use, they'd be back.
And then have to come back to us to change it.
Right.
Okay?
I just added it.
So we can, we can add that, right? Okay. So let me ask other board members if they have any questions or comments about this. Justin?
Uh, nope, nothing, nothing today.
Okay. Bill?
I like it.
Susan?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Bill?
Fine.
So I prepared for you a resolution. I did send it to the applicant in advance as well. I did just see a typo at number three where I put the word "the" twice, so that's corrected. And I added condition number four, there shall be no overnight parking of vehicles outside the building. I don't know if the board has any questions. If not, you've gone over your secret type two was done in February 7th. You wasted the public hearing on February 7th, and you received a GML referral response on January 19th, and it was a local determination.
I know at the last meeting, Kelly, we gave the Architectural Review Board approval. Does that need a resolution?
It does. I sent it in. I sent it a resolution. We might have it.
We don't have it?
I'll check. If not, what I can do for something like that is I can just email it to you to DocuSign and then send a hard copy to Deborah for her file.
I have the draft, because you mailed it, didn't you?
I mailed it.
Yeah.
No, I know we.
And you authorized to make a motion.
No, I know we approved it. I'm just asking where the resolution is.
Yeah, so I sent, what I'll do is tomorrow, I'll send you an email, and you can DocuSign it, and then I'll send a hard copy to Deborah, so that it's there for the file.
And you can send that with the site plan resolution also with the changes.
Yeah, and that'll make it easier, so you don't have to stop by town hall.
Okay. So it doesn't appear that there's anything standing in the way for us to approve this. I think everybody agrees. So I'll make a motion to approve the site plan resolution.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good.
You're all set.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'll get you the two sheets.
You're free to stay if you'd like.
I would want to. Nice to meet you. Well-tested, all of it. Trying to get the DEC, you get that paper, you have to foil it. Takes months.
All right, good luck. Okay, the next two items, Carlin and Tuxedo Historical. As I mentioned, I'm going to recuse myself, and I'm going to leave the room. And Bill is also a little uncomfortable since he has past relationship with the Historical Society. Should he leave also, or?
I'm not sure what his relationship is. If you feel.
Bill, you want to explain?
Yeah, I was on the Board of Trustees for the Historical Society, and I used to manage a lot of the building issues for the society as well. However, I'm no longer on the board, but I was for a few years.
Do you feel that you could be fair and analyze this on the materials that are presented for you?
Why? I feel I could be fair, but I'd like to recuse myself simply because I did have a relationship.
If you would feel more comfortable recusing yourself, you certainly can. Unfortunately, that would put the board at not having a quorum to consider at this meeting. But if the applicant is here, and I don't know, because I don't know.
No, the applicant is here.
Oh, okay. I can actually just tell them what I think the board would be looking for prior to your next meeting, so that for your next meeting, maybe able to move forward and take some action, if that would be okay.
Well, I would suggest that the consultants go over their reports after we leave, and you will know what you will have to do for the next meeting.
Can we ask questions?
I'll ask.
You can ask. It's just that no action can be taken because they're.
No action can be taken anyway because we don't have GML back.
Okay, I just don't want them to even make.
I just had a deep question.
Right, okay.
Okay, so we'll make our leave and do our thing.
So who runs the meeting while you're out?
Kelly, you want to take over?
Oh, sure, I'll move myself right on over there. Actually, I'll sit, I'll sit myself so that I don't. I just don't want it to fall through the time.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, now, why don't you give a brief presentation to the board of questions? Carlin.
You want to start with Carlin?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry.
I don't know who might talk to everybody.
Mostly those three.
Okay. So I'm Carl Beardon Full. I'm the owner of Carlin Industries, the white building on the bottom hill. Basically, I'm just proposing to make the building pretty, and nothing, nothing major. I don't know if I'm allowed to get up and show pictures. I don't know if you have any pictures with you.
We received, we received one, right?
That's existing, that's what exists now.
Okay.
So like this was, you have that picture at all? Yes. Okay, great. So then basically, from the, from the top down, we're going to replace the shingles. First, I'll just go through everything real quick, all right? So we're going to replace the shingles. We're going to open up the bottom windows and these, this picture you didn't have, I just gave this to me, but it's an easier picture to look at. So it was originally, these are our bricked up windows. We're going to open up the bricked up windows and put in glass windows, the original glass windows, like they were originally, to match the two that were up top here. So that, we're going to repaint it, basically the exact same color, and put in a nice, pretty door. So I'm not changing anything, I'm just trying to make everything pretty, and I brought, I brought everything, you know, examples of everything that I wanted to do.
And the sign stays the same?
Yeah, I'm not touching this sign, I'm not touching it, and I'm not doing anything with it, no intentions of it. So this would be right here, this is, this is the color slate they say. This is what I'm going to use for the, for the new shingles. Four.
So one thing that we're going to ask you to do before next month's meeting is actually write down and submit what the colors are, so if it's GAF or whatever you just said before, to say, okay, Benjamin Moore, GAF Sterling, whatever the color is.
Okay.
So that we have a listing, and that's what's, that's what's going to be approved.
Not a problem. Okay. So this is a swatch of the paint on my building right now. I just peeled it off, if you can see. And I'm proposing just to put a Benjamin Moore, I try to match the color identically. This is actually Benjamin Moore's brand new line of exterior paint. It's supposedly fantastic with brick and hold up to the elements, because as you can see, one of the biggest problems I had in the past was snow plowing. When the snow and the salt was thrown up on the building, it just, it just eats away at everything. So I'm trying to prevent that from happening again. Also, the windows, that took a while to research, because I had to pick out windows that were able to handle impact of salt, rocks, and everything else. So I got these Anderson 400 windows. They're, they're tempered, they're laminated, and, and they match these windows. So it's, it's a perfect match of these two, and the whole, so the whole bottom would match the existing top two. And last but not least, I think you could see a.
Current door?
The door, thank you. So that's the current door. So we picked out this real pretty door by Revco, it's called a Patterson, and then we figured that would be a real nice entrance door. So basically, we're just trying to make things pretty. I can easily write this stuff down, because we have all of it, we've done it all, we instantly went through everything, so I can easily write it down for you, the exact color matches and all that kind of stuff for you.
Can I get copies of those items for the file?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
What damages brick is with the salt and water would have is when it gets in.
Right.
There's a product called Professional Water Seal, which comes in three different strings, strongest of which keeps everything out. It's clear, can look through it, but it prevents anything from getting into the brick.
That's before the paint goes on?
Yeah.
Okay. Because we did talk about the special primers putting them, putting them on before painting.
There isn't, there isn't a paint that live up to that, but Professional Water Seal brings a really good bond with the brick.
Okay. Yeah, because we want it to last longer than just a couple of years.
It was designed originally to make it graffiti, like wipe graffiti off with a cloth, so.
Hopefully, we don't have that name in this town.
No. It's the same principle.
Fair enough.
The windows on the side, on the first floor, those would be changed too to match?
I'm sorry, which way are we looking now? No, no, we're going to leave everything. Because that faces the road, we didn't want to, we didn't want to open that up. So basically, I'm trying to make it look as nice as possible with the least amount of overload, you know? I don't want to really change everything or do too much, I just want to make it look nice. And I, and the appeal was really off from Route 17, you know, from looking at it straight on. And I'll gladly give you pictures of the doors and everything else.
Pardon me. I apologize, but I missed the beginning of what you were speaking.
Okay.
I came in when you were discussing windows, so what did you say?
Oh, yeah, sure, so this picture's a little easier. So these, the building, the windows were all bricked up many, many years ago. So we're going to open up the windows and put in windows to match the existing windows that, and there were two originally in here, these two glass. So basically, all the bottom nine are going to match the top two. So it's basically all the way across Route 17, it'll look real pretty, kind of like a real retail type of building.
How old are these, these windows?
I don't remember. Top windows? You said they were in good shape, I know. I know you said they were in good shape, that's all I remember. I don't, I honestly don't remember.
Early seventies.
Early seventies.
Early seventies.
Okay.
They were bricked up, the windows were bricked up, you know, etc.
And you can find matching windows for them?
Yeah, we did. We did. Took a, took a long time, but we did.
They're custom.
And, yeah, and as I said, because I was concerned, if you can see even on that picture how the salt and everything would go right on against the window, too, right? So that was my big concern. I, I don't want to spend all this money and then have to spend more money with broken glass, you know? So hopefully, we got the right stuff according to everyone we spoke to.
From an energy standpoint, these windows are probably tighter than.
They are.
Than the older ones.
Right. Yeah, that's true.
Maybe if they're identical, from a standpoint of your saving energy, it may be worthwhile over time to replace these with more modern versions of the same thing, just to save on the energy costs.
I'm with you.
You know, the heat loss.
I'm with you, but it all comes down to money, right? So I'm just trying to do the nicest thing with, most efficient, you know?
I see. Very well.
So in terms of this application, since Bill's not refused from this application, the board can make a secret determination. Under secret, this is a type two action, because somebody can make a motion to require this as a type two.
Any other questions on what the gentleman has provided?
Suggestions and questions.
On the, on the window frame, do you have a match the color of the existing?
So, very good question. What we're going to do is.
Got it.
In one of these pamphlets, at least, a pamphlet. Thank you very much. Here. So basically, we wanted to make it look like it matches the town, so we saw, we saw that. So they had that forest green, and that kind of matches everything around my building. So we figured we want to, you know, we want to make it look like it's all part of, you know, the town, so that's what we're going to do.
Okay.
Any other questions?
So the, this image makes it look like it's kind of like a two-tone thing going on, but it's all going to be white, right?
Yes. Totally white. Yeah, just more like that other picture I just showed you, right? So this, this was, this was a drawing taken many years ago when it was two-tone. But this is what it looks like now, and that's how it's going to be. It's going to be completely.
Just that with new windows.
Right.
Great. And then remaining or existing gutter stays?
No, so I did not mention that. It's just a copper gutter, right? Yeah, I want to replace that, because I want to make sure, if I'm going to put on the shingles, I want to make sure that, you know, everything is, you know, the water's dispersed properly, there's no issues there. So yes, I am going to be doing the gutters.
All right, new gutters, new shingles, new paint, new windows.
Yes, sir.
Great.
The whole building is going to be pointed.
Oh, oh, great, good.
Okay, I'd like to make a type two secret resolution.
Second.
Wait a second. All of us in favor?
Aye. And the public hearing on this application is in your discretion, so the board should determine if you want to hold a public hearing on this.
So let's pass this one first. So all ayes?
Oh, we did, I think, yep.
Okay. Resolution passes. Public hearing, what is the opinions of the board?
I personally don't think I'll change them.
I need to change a few windows, change some channels. Who cares what Emily thinks of that?
It'll look nicer, right? They're going to be happy because it'll look nicer.
I would think unnecessary also. Do we need a resolution?
A motion to waive the public hearing.
Okay, I'd like to pause a resolution to waive the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, sub-passed.
And we're still waiting on the GML referral, so the board wouldn't be able to take any action on this one tonight, which is why I asked if you could submit those colors in narrative, that way I can have something the board to consider, take action on at their next meeting, and then we'll have the report back to the county by then.
Okay. Very good. I appreciate it, guys. Thank you very, very much.
Thanks, man.
Thank you for being so. So I told you exactly what you were going to.
Unless you want to hang back.
This is fascinating.
I definitely don't need that, just the actual color.
The color, yeah. I'll write it all down, I'll make it all forthright.
I appreciate that.
Thank you for being so.
You can email the pieces of paper that you might have to me if you want, or leave them if you have any.
So. I mean, leave that way, because that's an easy view to see that, you know, matches here. I'll leave that with you. That's match back, I can give you a couple of copies right now. So I know I have an extra copy of the door. Actually, it's right here, I can use an extra copy. And. You have a key watch? Yeah, I mean, I don't need this watch, I know. You know what should I do for me, though? Can you just write that down? Find it for me?
Look at the off-white paint that they used on the orange top.
Okay.
We really worked on getting that color, it's a nice warm off-white. I think it's the right color.
Yeah, of course, yeah. I, I look at that a lot, actually.
It painted a little brick on it.
Yes. With, with us, that was part of it. When we look at, when we look at this, we compare it, we say we wanted to complement everything.
Somewhere, we have the record of what that paint is, because we specified.
Tuxedo Historical Society.
Okay. So we can get it for you if you need. The other thing is, if you're having any trouble with.
My white glass.
You can.
Bill.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Instruction advice, not.
Okay, I.
Please put your name for the record, and you can tell the board originally what you're looking for.
Hello, I'm William Mancy, an architect, and also a board member of the Tuxedo Historical Society. And the project that we are presenting is the former Chase Bank, which will be the future new home of the Historical Society. which will be the future new home of the historical society. Our plan is to reorganize the parking. It's currently set up for ATM, thank you. Drive group, and also provide, most importantly, a second entrance. A bank can get away with one entrance, but that's the only building I know of, and, you know, doesn't have two entrances. So where the ATM was housed is now a concrete block, you see that? We're proposing a new door, and that will become the front door, because it'll be ADA compliant, the parking will be there. There's a very low lintel beam that we have to buy by, so we have to shake the sidewalk and drain that area. So it's a little, little complicated, but, you know, we can do it. We're removing all the security lighting that's mercury haloid, that I don't know how they got on that building, looking at the code. I think they just put it on themselves, taking all that off, gonna clean the building, and propose, you know, what was the original entrance, propose outdoor seating area. And then really, because of the site, if you look at the site, it's very, there's a swale, a deep swale in the site. And we need a buffer from the road, and historically, we have pictures, we can show you, that there was a hedge right on the road, but we'd like to push the hedge back, and what I'm showing on the drawings is wrap the seating area, and then plant a pollinating meadow as a part of, you know, the state has a flyway or some sort of pollinating flyway that we'd like to dissipate in. I think it'd be a real boost for Tuxedo, I think it would help gardens. We are a historical society, but I think it's an important thing. We have this piece of grass, which we really don't know what to do with, and we think that's the best use of it. What else are we doing? That, that's roughly what we're doing.
Valerie, do you wanna go over your comments?
Sure, I mean, I just have minor comments, I mean, I understand that the general, what you're proposing, I think in terms of just finalizing a little bit of the site plan, and I'll defer to, one of my comments was the fact that there were no proposed contours or grading at the new parking lot, but I'll defer to Sean, the engineer, as to whether that's necessary. The, a couple other things is just if you're proposing to put any new lighting in, if you can just add that to the site plan, and signs, if you're planning to put any signs, if you can provide information on the, like, location and dimensions of the signs. And then we did recognize that you do have landscaping that you're proposing, and we're just looking for a little bit more information, and if there will be any tree removal due to the location of some of the work. Because some of the proposed work looks like it's close to the trees, and if you're not planning to do tree removal, we just wanna note how you're planning to protect some of those trees, because some of them look like they would, the work would encroach into like the root area of those trees.
There is a cherry tree on the right side, if you're looking at the building, that's noted on the demolition plan, is being removed. And on the proposed plan, we are showing site lighting, we're putting sconces on either side of the existing entry, and also sconces on the new door opening. And then the existing site had pedestal lamps, pole lamps around, and we were gonna organize them around the parking lot. So that was sort of
Right, so we'll just need to make sure that the, that needs section ninety-eight dash thirty-nine outdoor lighting. So if you could just provide a little bit more detail, that'd be great. Those are my comments.
Does anybody have any questions for Valerie?
Sure, so I think you received my comments today.
Yeah, thank you.
So I provided the applicant with an advanced copy of the comments, just to facilitate his discussion with you this evening. So, the first thing, I understand the billing inspector made a determination that this use is an art gallery. The proposed use doesn't really fit into any of the uses in the zoning district, so he made a determination that it's an art gallery, and that's how he presented the plan. My first approach when I tried to review this was to see if there was any possibility that this applicant, because of their nature, would be exempt from your zoning. And there were two items that I looked at, one of them is in the report that I sent to you. So the zoning code has a municipal use, this could meet the definition of a municipal use, but a municipal use requires site plan approval, so they're back, they're back here anyway. The other is if it's a community benefit use, which again, I think this might even still meet that, but then that would require a special permit and site plan, so that's even more onerous than being an art gallery. So essentially, what I'm getting to is I've reviewed it as if it were an art gallery, just as it was determined by the billing inspector. There are a number of items I had in my report, but I think the applicant can address all those. As Valerie indicated, there's, there's some additional detail required. In terms of dimensional requirements, it's a unique lot, you have frontage on both Seventeen and Park Avenue. Under this zoning code, it actually has two front yards and two side yards and no rear yard. So the bulk table needs to be revised to reflect that, it doesn't really affect the proposal, because everything is essentially existing. There is a requirement in the code, it's relatively new requirement, that impervious surfaces be set back from the sidelines equal to one-half of the setback distance, four or five feet. So the setback requirement's twenty-five feet, one-half is twelve and a half feet, and the applicant does encroach into that. I think you could address that, getting a determination that it's an existing non-conforming condition from the billing inspector. And there's a couple other items in there that I think are existing.
Outside yard, I think we've got, yeah.
So that's on the west side?
It actually occurs on all the sides, the plan's orientated with north to the left.
Yep.
And you can, if you look, you can see they have those, like, circles with two triangles inside. And you can see it's very close to the curved area right there, so the pavement is encroaching right now. So the billing inspector would have to make a determination that it's an existing non-conforming use. In terms of the site itself, I discussed earlier about some additional details are needed, there's some pavement sections on the plan, but there's no indication of what those thicknesses are or anything like that, I presume that's gonna be detailed out. I think you're gonna need to provide some grading on there, as I'm sure you know, because you're, you're changing the layout of the parking area, you're removing islands, and you still have to try to get it into those catch basins. Item that I was kinda most concerned was the parking accessing stalls number eight and fifteen. Fifteen's a handicap stall, and eight is a standard stall, there are the stalls closest to the building, there's no turnaround internally. But there is thirty feet, and I've researched codes, that with a thirty-foot drive, you don't need a turnaround or turn back, so. That, yeah, that, I agree, I just wanna make sure that you're okay with that. What happens is stall eight will come back out, it will go deeper into that thirty-foot aisle, and then they'd have to, you know, make a turn, make a left turn to exit the lot. It's, because you have the extra side, the aisle width, I think it's possible, I just wanted to point it out just to make sure. Particularly because, you know, if it's a busy evening, and I don't really know how the building's gonna be used, and you have a lot of people maybe exiting at different times, you could have people using that curb ramp to enter the parking lot with somebody packing up from there, so it's just, it's something to consider. Other than that, I don't know if the board or the applicant has any questions on our report?
I just had questions in general, so I'll wait.
If nobody has any questions for Sean, go ahead.
Okay, so I'm just going through my list, the outdoor lighting you've already addressed, so I can cross that off. The, the current front door, you said that's still going to be like an exit or out to that patio?
That's wrong.
May I just say, I love the idea of the patio with the pollinating garden, what a perfect setting for, for historical events and activities. That's really nice. The, so the, this building has a basement.
Right.
Will that space be used also, or what's the, or is that not part of the
Oh, yeah, well, it's, currently, there's the safe and other kind of safe rooms. We have moisture issues, we have to
I was gonna ask about that, because I know there's mold in there.
Right, right, what we'd hopefully like to do is be able to store the collection there at some point. Right now, until we understand, it's very humid and moist in that space.
So the main floor is where you do the, the displays and the activities?
That's right, lectures, I mean, we envisioned, it's a beautiful space, just to let you in on what we're thinking. The banks, you know, probably in the forties, fifty-sixties, they created that mezzanine, with all the air conditioning, with the most air conditioning I've ever seen, a lot of air conditioning. So the notion is to take that away completely, there's a beautiful structure, you know, it's an incredible wood truss system.
Right.
In this, it's almost a barn kind of building.
Yeah.
And so just really open that up, and we're gonna work with, you know, we have to get an occupancy, we don't know what that is yet, but I think we could make it one of the nicest spaces in Tuxedo or gatherings, not just the historical society, but anyone who needs a space. I was, I worked on the train station, and, you know, we use that little space for, you know, the town needs a bigger space like that, and I think that's what the bank could become.
Right.
And the parking, we have extra parking, we only need seven spaces, I think we have
Yeah, I saw that, seventeen.
We have a lot, but I think because of the type of use, I think it'd benefit, you know, having that many spaces.
Totally agree. And then the, so you, you've talked about the internal remediation, which clearly, there will be some.
Right.
Okay, that was all I had, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Bill, did you have anything?
Yeah, so, you know, I think it's a nice, nice reuse of the bank, and good to, good to see something nice for the community going in there.
Yeah, this would be perfect.
Can you describe, what's the, the general function of the space? Like, how many people work in there, is there someone there all the time?
Well, they'll probably, hopefully, it will be open, and there'll be someone there. Currently, we have, you know, depending on the day of the week, three or four people working there.
Should I just address that? A totally, a total volunteer organization, and our plan is to always have someone over there for visitors or whatever. At some point, I'd like to get to a place where we actually employ somebody that could be there much more frequently than we currently are able to do that, but our finances will determine that, basically. But we're open almost every single day over there, so if people call, they certainly have access, and then we're open on regular hours.
Yeah, it'd be nice for people to just drop in, you know, view the collection and stuff, whatever they have to display.
We love that it's in the downtown community, so we hope it becomes more visible and useful, yeah.
So my next question is, so in the, in the front yard, you're gonna remove the ramp and the stairs?
Right.
Is it gonna be like new stair landing, or is it kind of front second get built up?
It's all like gray, the original bank was grayed, and there were steps up to the front door.
Okay.
So about two steps, I think, I believe, so now, well, we're gonna restore those steps, because the handicap access will be from the new entry, and then you'll be at gray on the paving. So we've got really wide sidewalks, and then the paving to the terrace area.
Okay.
So that will eliminate, that was the first, I mean, when I first saw the bank, you know, it was like, I call it like a cattle, right? You know, it really kinda takes away from the, that really, it so sticks right out at you. But that is the ADA code, and you, you know, that's the only, you need a ramp, unless you have another door.
So how are you making the door work, do you have to take the floor down where the ATM was, or?
The floor, we're at, we're just about at the parking lot level. That's, yeah, that, so you had a contractor look at it, but we've gotta do some drainage to get the water away. So that's the notion of trench drain, it ties into that.
You just have the ADA clearance, be careful of the slopes around the doors, they can be tricky. No, otherwise, looks great, I like that little patio area in front, I think it'd be a nice place to have a little gathering, it's nice.
So as we said before, the board can't take any action tonight. I'll just generally advise the board that when you can't take action, this would be a type-two action under secret, because it's a conversion from commercial to art gallery, which makes it commercial. We did refer to GML, I don't think we've gotten that back yet. And then at your next meeting, a public hearing is in your discretion, so you'll have to make a determination if you want one.
We do that at the next meeting?
At the next meeting, because you don't have a forum, you see.
Right.
So, that's where we asked.
Can I ask you a question? The building department waivers, how does that happen in the sequence of?
So what I'll do is I'll break out, I'll send an email to Deborah and Dave this week, and they can just ask me for his opinion to determine whether or not they're pre-existing, legally pre-existing non-conforming conditions. If they are, Deborah will let you know, and you won't have a problem. If they're not, then you'll need a variance, and you'll have to apply to the ZPA.
Right.
But hopefully, you'll have a response in the next week or so.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll go get the other.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, the last item is Watts Tower. So Keith, you wanna give us an update as to where things stand right now?
Sure, happy to, just a, just a plan for orientation, so. Since we were here the last time in January, we tried to move things along, we really appreciate the really excellent help that the planning board gave us last meeting to coming up with a solution to be able to use this side entrance, at least temporarily, while we're working on the site plan application remaining issues. And we want board to know we've put all those things in place, we have camera monitoring this junction with up to thirty days reserve, so that if the billing inspector needs to come check it for any compliance issues, he can. We've got signage set up here to indicate that any of the Watts Tower vehicle service, multi-axle vehicle servicing site only take a righting turn out of the site, and that none, of course, we can't put signage on main road, but we advise any delivered people to not approach the site from further down and turn the right into the site. So we appreciate that, we put all those measures into place, but we haven't been able to use a lot of them in the last month, because the conditions that were set for Ramapo for tree clearing removal were based, the MS four, which there is in the town of Ramapo, approved our SWIP, which involved tree clearing activities. But then when it went to the DEC, it kind of met the, it kind of expected log jam, that stuff happens in Strongwater Region Three. So after a lot of back and forth, DEC actually came back and said, if you take down the trees by hand, and you don't take them up, you just let them fall, and you don't remove them by mechanized equipment, it would cause a land disturbance, you can take down the trees, you don't need our approval to just cut down the trees.
And leave them in place.
And leave them in place, so therefore, we are about sixty acres in into tree cutting right now. And we'll finish by middle of this month, so that's, that's good for us, because we get the trees down in the season that will not cause a problem for the Indiana long-eared bat, which is soon to be endangered species, which would otherwise harm nesting those trees out.
When you say you'll be finished?
Fell into the trees.
Right, all phases or just the first couple phases?
All the phases.
All of the phases, so all of the trees that you ultimately will have to take down will be down by the middle of March?
Yeah, definitely got him. So we, we did, we did some outreach to our neighbors with a newsletter, and then a direct mail letter to
Yeah, I personally got that.
I did, too.
And we actually only had one person call since the tree clearing has started, so hopefully, we've saved it.
I've got the call, thank you.
So is that why we haven't seen a lot of trucks?
Correct, correct, because the trees are just Trees are just, trees are just down on the site, so the DEC didn't want us to be moving them around or be hauling, dragging them across the ground, creating ground disturbance, creating erosion control problems. Our next steps are the submission of a full Our next steps are the submission of a full SWIP for the site. Mr. Hoffman, just for your information, because you know these things better than I do, uh, it was an issue of how the region three interpreted phasing of a project. So, um, they want to seek a complete SWIP, which, which we have, it was included with the FEIS, needs to be updated. So our current procedure is probably the time the trees are down, we will have the full SWIP, we will resubmit it to the MS four. The MS four has already agreed to it in principle. They haven't seen it, of course. But when they sign off, then we'll resubmit our ENLI and hopefully then April, May, we'll be able to gradually be able to remove the trees from the site, you know, over months at a time. You know what unsightly thing it was when we had to leave some of the trees down at the other, uh, Sterlington Road entrance?
Just driving by yesterday or, or today, I didn't, it must've been yesterday, I did notice a yellow excavator up in that area. Um, you said you couldn't bring any heavy equipment in. What's?
So that excavator was brought to site early on when we thought we were gonna be able to use that to remove the trees. We have not used it at all, hasn't moved from where it came and was parked on the site. Um, we have, uh, used some Bobcats and other equipment because as some of the trees came down, they fell across the, the old logging road that wound its way across the site and we had to just clear that to emergency access across the site. But other than that, we haven't used any of that major equipment. The contractor just chose to leave it there, but we're not using it across the site for the land disturbance issues. So, um, where, where we're at with, um, your board is on January twenty seventh, we submitted a, a, a letter in to try to respond and a set of revised documents to respond to the comments that came from, um, Mr. Mastra and Mr. Hoffman. And so we, uh, we submitted that. We know February was a bad agenda month for you all and it wasn't pressing for us, but we did just wanna hopefully resolve any of the remaining, I hope we resolve the remaining issues that came up on the seven acre, uh, portion of the site. Things like, uh, light posts were revised in response to, uh, the building inspector, Mr. Makish's interpretation on the driveway and roadway definition. So those were reduced to fifteen feet in height and twenty feet spaced accordingly. So we, we hope we've addressed those issues. If we have, then, you know, we hope we're getting close to having resolved all the issues relative to site plan approval for these seven acres. If there's anything that's remaining, then we have an answer.
And so why don't we go to Valerie and Sean and you can give your input.
Yeah, so I provided a memo to, uh, Deborah that, uh, all our comments were addressed in the latest, um, submission.
Cool. Okay, Sean?
So I'll be doing the same, but as you know, Mr. Chairman, it would be a letter to you that you, the plan's ready for you to sign. The only thing I'd just like to discuss, and maybe Kelly can just weigh in, you have, uh, you had an approval you issued in January. In this January, you amended that approval, uh, to allow the construction access. You then would be amending it again? Is that the procedure?
Yeah.
Okay. So when they go forward to convert this to the full access, if you will, that would be another amendment. Okay.
And we, we said that, uh, this approval is only valid until May fifteenth. So at that, right?
Yeah, was it, I was thinking, was it May or was it April?
It was May fifteenth.
I don't think it was that the approval was, um, expired on May fifteenth. My recollection was that the use of the driveway for construction vehicles expired on May fifteenth.
No, I, I believe that's correct, Kelly.
Yeah, no, that, that's correct, but that was basically what the approval was for.
Uh, no, I, I understand, but.
That's all we really gave the approval for. We didn't give the approval for the ultimate use of this for residents, for example.
But I, I think ultimately what's gonna happen after giving your time, I think you're going to obtain the approval from this board for the full use. You're gonna have your SWIP in place, so before May fifteenth, you'll be able to utilize a driveway and it's, I'll say, permanent.
If the conditions are satisfied. Yeah.
Okay.
Sean or Keith, you have, I, I know it's probably impossible to predict when you'll get that SWIP approval. Um, any feel for that at all? Is it gonna be six months or two months?
Uh, it's, it's interesting that the applicant kinda got caught up with the DEC. So the, the procedure right now, if you're in MS four and the town of Tuxedo is not, an MS four is, um, a municipal separate storm sewer system. Ultimately what happens is that the municipality is responsible for enforcing the DEC's law relative to stormwater control. The D, the MS four, uh, official, usually the building inspector, but maybe the town engineer or something like that, will review and authorize, accept the stormwater pollution prevention plan. And you'll, usually that's it. You submit your notice of intent and then it's either a five-day or a sixty-day turnaround period in the DEC that grant you coverage under the permit. I guess they saw something they didn't like in terms of how the phasing was interpreted and now they've kind of put the brakes on that procedure. So there really is no timeline that they're required to respond. Um, I, I don't, did they give you an indication that they anticipate by April or is that just your, your hope?
It's, it's our schedule to, in the middle of this month, around the time the trees are cleared, we'll submit back to Joel Dionke, who's the MS four representative for Ramapo, the SWIP for the full of the site. They'll probably turn it around. No reason to believe they won't. They already reviewed the previous one. Um, and then we will turn that around back to the DEC. It will satisfy the condition that they had set, which is that they wanted the full SWIP of the whole project. So we hope that it's five days after that and we would have the SWIP approved. So end of March-ish, uh, could be as soon as that, but, um, our predictions on how quickly the DEC will respond in the past have proven to be optimistic.
So it's conceivable that our approval, um, to bring the, the trees out, which expires on May fifteenth, that may have to be extended. If this SWIP is delayed, which is preventing you from taking the trees out, right?
That's, that's true.
Conceivable, yes.
So, um, you know, maybe we should see how you do. And you might need to come back at the beginning of April for us to either extend that or at least for an update.
That's, that's exactly what we had planned. We, we weren't planning to bring it up tonight because we figured it would be more, we know beginning of April, we've got that approval from DEC, we're very clear we're gonna get it, but we can give you some more.
But with our, with our restrictions of, uh, six hours a day, five trucks an hour, how many truckloads will you need? And is that timeframe doable for you with that restriction?
Uh, May fifteenth?
Yeah.
Well, if we're.
That's thirty trucks a day, hundred and fifty trucks a week, no Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, understood. We, we had, of course, we had thought when we talked earlier about it, that we would've been starting that activity in January. Now we'll be all the way in April. So we're taking the trees down a lot faster than we thought we could take them down and maybe we'll take them off the site quicker too. But I think about the first, by your meeting, our, our plan is.
Yeah, I mean, we can. We can revisit that beginning of April.
Beginning of April.
See how you're doing.
Not much, you know.
Um, the one other question I have, the letter you wrote, uh, March first, where you talk about you meeting the conditions. One thing that we talked about two months ago when you were here, um, we said we didn't want a right-hand turn from Sterling Mine into the, into your site. You did not put that in that letter and you alluded to the fact that maybe you can't do that. Put a sign up on Sterling Mine saying no right turns for tractor trailers. Is that?
That's accurate. The applicant doesn't have jurisdiction and this board can't really require it of the applicant because the applicant, it's something the applicant can't guarantee that they could satisfy. Um, I think we talked about this before. I know you and I shared some emails about it. The best thing the town could do is ask the county. County has jurisdiction over that roadway if they would, uh, consider making that a no right turn.
So who should, uh?
If the, if the town board is in favor of that, supervisor just sends a brief letter to the county, um, Deputy Commissioner Ewald or somebody like that, and they would look at it. They've already been, you know, incorporated into this process, obviously, through the GML with you and they're very familiar with it. They've, I know, had multiple conversations with Orange County DPW. So I don't know if in any of those conversations, there was a discussion about restriction on right turns in, but it's something that the town board can ask the county to take.
Hey, 'cause there are other issues with, uh, Sterling Mine Road going east. Now, the hill is not properly identified. We talked about that.
So we should follow up?
Yeah, I don't know if anything, I, I think the best thing they do is, is their record is that the supervisor just send a very brief letter asking them to look into it.
And, and I, I believe too, that, the, if our recollection is right, that was for multi-axle vehicles.
Right, right.
So, um, yeah, we just, we just didn't have any way to enforce that. There's also another use here, which is the, um, sister servants, St. Joseph's Care Home and the facility, St. Mary's that they've sold off now or in the process they're up. And we don't have, we're not in control of people making deliveries to them, but we're in control of people that come to our site. Definitely not. Yeah.
So you're restricting, um, only, for only right-hand turns out of your site, not to Sterling Mine?
So we're telling any deliveries, multi-axle deliveries that are coming to the site, that they have to approach the site from the east and turn off of the left-hand turn.
But then I'm thinking of the trees, they would only go right.
Correct.
Out of your site.
Right.
To the east. No left-hand turns out of your site.
That was the, that was your direction.
Right, okay. And that is under your jurisdiction?
Yes.
You can, at least not. Okay.
And we put that signage up here just ahead of the junction of the road going up to the care home.
Okay.
Because it applies to the people coming off of our side of the street.
Okay. Hi, um, anybody else have any questions about this? Bill?
Of course I do. Because I looked at all sixty-three of the documents. I just had a question about the deer fencing. It said electrical fencing and I just wanted clarification on that. The plan had, it said electrical fencing for the deer fencing. It's not electrified, right?
So, all, all the fencing is non-electrical or, well, there's an electrical, um, incoming electrical metering in that, that small white square you can see in the top left corner. It's an electrical cabinet, which has got fencing around it, but it's not, not electrical.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
It's electrical, not electrical fence.
Got it. Anything else? Oh, I'm good, thank you. Bill?
Justin?
Nothing.
All right, so.
I do. Um, just two things, actually. Um, the first is that pursuant to your code, you're supposed to make a decision within sixty-two days of the close of the public hearing. And obviously we, we moved forward with that for the first amendment of the site plan, but we haven't gotten there for the second one. So just ask if the applicant would be willing to, to waive that timeframe until the board's April fourth meeting.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And the second is if the board would like to, I think you're gonna get a little bit, a lot more information by your April meeting, but if you'd like to have a draft resolution to work off of, if you could make a motion to authorize that, if you think it's ready.
Okay, I can do that.
I want to make sure I understand what the ask is to the county that's being suggested to come from town board or specifically the supervisor.
I don't know the exact wording, but we, we would not want, um, tractor trailer type vehicles to come down going east on Sterling Mine, making a right-hand turn into the site.
Coming from Jersey.
Right, right, right. That's what we don't want. Plus the fact that you're on your way down the hill already when you see the road narrow signs. You know, that's way too late by that time.
So you've already passed the crest here?
Yeah.
Yeah. That should be done well before you get, basically by the, as you start going up the hill, that it's going to narrow in a quarter mile or whatever it is.
So the request is, uh, uh, asking the county to put a sign, no right turn of a certain size vehicle?
Like a no tractor trailer turn and also to re-sign it, that the road is gonna narrow as you're going down the hill.
And, uh, the point that was brought up about the other property owner, um, do they have to buy into that or?
Well, I suppose they should.
No, you could ask them just to make it, uh, no construction vehicles and that would satisfy for the applicant and still allow on the off chance that somebody was to come in for the adjacent property with a non-construction vehicle.
So as far as the construction vehicle, uh, thing, is that for a limited amount of time?
It could be, yeah. It could be for the duration of their, their project or something like that. I don't know how the county's gonna wanna actually administer it, if they even wanna entertain it at all. Uh, I mean, they, they may get the letter, and this happens sometimes with DOT, and they say, you know, we really, you know, are not in a position to look at this for a while and doesn't get any attention whatsoever.
So wouldn't that be a letter that you would craft?
I can do that for you, Mr. Supervisor, sure.
To the, I said to the.
Because once the, the Ramapo entrance to Watchtower gets constructed, um, a lot of this goes away, other than residents and, uh, some staff, right? Speaking of which, uh, I know you can't start on that till you get your SWIP approved, but once you do get that SWIP approved, hopefully sooner or later, are there any plans to expedite that as we've discussed in the past?
We have at the, at, largely at the response to your comments at the last meeting, we've gone ahead and submitted our application for temporary construction entrance at the main entrance location. So we're progressing that simultaneously to all of these works.
And this is totally irrelevant to Watchtower or Tuxedo, but we've spoken about this. There's construction further east in Ramapo. There's a temporary or, a temporary road going up the hill. Do you know what that is?
I don't. Aaron, do you know what that is?
I don't.
It's not that development. That's even further east.
Correct.
I don't know what.
It's just past the, um, Conescen easement there.
Correct.
Says you pass it on the right.
Right.
And I know because we got, we got a cease and desist letter because somebody thought it was us doing it. And, uh, we wrote back and said it's not us, but I don't know who it is.
Yeah, I think it is.
Someone else out there who doesn't know who it is.
That property wasn't for sale for just like a private housing development, but it's not like a development, but a private home on some acreage and I think somebody bought it. They had talked to us early on about some information that we had. I don't know if that all was approved, but there was a home, it was like a one-off single home.
Really?
Yeah.
Heck of a place to try to film.
Yeah.
Okay, so we, I should make a motion to have you draft a, uh, resolution.
Yes.
To say what? What would be on that?
It would be for the full site plan, but obviously it's gonna be modified based on everything that happens this month, but it would be a draft to really work on.
Okay.
See something, taking what they already have to the end.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to have Kelly draft that resolution.
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I guess that's as far as we need to go tonight on this one, right? So thanks again for coming for the update.
Thank you.
Before we adjourn, uh, we've received a couple of, uh, training, uh, courses.
Ooh.
So, uh, I think you sent those out, right? So if possible, you know, try to, try to get that, uh, get that in.
How does that get recorded? Because I participated in that webinar last week.
Oh, you did one.
Did you get a certificate?
Yeah.
No, not yet.
Um, okay.